All right. Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you, everybody, for coming on to this digital, the working group of Digital Equity Team here. It's four thirty-two. So I'll kick this meeting off. Just before we get going, I want to acknowledge my colleagues who are here. So we have Counselor Tim Allen in the room with us. We also have Sequoia Malone. From these are, what's your official title?
Grant Director.
Grant Director. I didn't want to say coordinator. Grant's Director. I think we also have online. My colleague Tracy Whitfield. So thank you, Counselor Whitfield, for joining us.
Welcome.
Many other members of the Digital Equity Team that's been doing a lot of good work over the last several years. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Eric Weiss, who is going to lead us into the discussion.
Good evening, everyone. It's good to see all the faces I've seen at a number of these meetings and at least one new one here. As the Counselor said, we've been working on this for a while, and this is intended to be a feedback meeting in which we could make some decisions with regards to the document itself. And at the next meeting, try to prioritize what the city of Springfield is looking for that would be sent off to MBI. So we've been feeling pretty good. We've updated the document. We've put as much of the up-to-date data as we could in there. And I guess the next thing for me, the easiest thing for me to do would be to bring the document up on the screen. Let's see if I can. And everybody see that?
Yes, we can.
Yeah.
Awesome. So again, here is the document as sent to you. This is the one dated one twenty-two twenty-five. To what level of detail do we need me to go at this point?
I mean, I, you know, we've sent out the, this document to the folks of the committee. I know an email was sent by the City Council Office. So, but I, you know, I'd like to give as much detail as we can to kind of what you've done here, what you've added, a lot of feedback from the committee over the last several months. And so I think we'd like to see, one, what you've done, and then, two, you know, get any questions, and three, kind of understand next steps.
Okay, so I will, without trying to go too fast, kind of go through each section a little bit here to try to explain what was, what was done. So in the intro, we talk about what is a digital divide, what is digital equity as a goal, and how do we get there? And this is meant to set the stage as to what we're talking about. And then we decided that it'll be really important to lead off the document with all the highest priorities recommendations. One, because it makes it a much better read, to be honest. And two, because it gives upfront what people have been talking about, what people would like to focus on. So a condensed version of the top recommendations is what we put in this, in the place here to allow for the Digital Equity Working Group to consider them. So without any hesitation, I'm going to jump in on this, and then we can talk later on. But first one is create a permanent Digital Equity Working Group for the city. The idea here being that with technology changing on a pretty rapid level, it's important for people to be able to stay abreast of what's going on. And a working group for the city would be a valuable way to bring in expertise from the community as well as provide it to the city and allow for some small-scale democracy for exchange of ideas. The second recommendation came down to the idea of the Digital Equity Navigator type position, to have somebody who can help. It could be part of somebody's job. It could be a job unto itself. But the idea is that there would be somebody who'd be chasing down funding opportunities, looking to keep this process moving, keep this process going over time. There is no doubt that investing in technology is now and forever a permanent part of how towns and cities run their business. And it's to be as aware as possible is critical. Item number three is a hotspot lending program, being able to expand it. It has great value where it is put in place, and the idea of having enough of it there is important. And we've learned that both through the pandemic and through other communities, that having enough in place for people to use could be lent through the libraries, could be done in other ways, allows for access that otherwise wouldn't be present in that location. Looking for future funds, and we'll talk about this more later, undoubtedly. But we have done some in the interim, and then the idea is that the city should keep looking. The climate changes from time to time. And again, this kind of ties back to the equity coordinator, the digital coordinator, to have somebody paying attention and making sure that they're taking a look at what comes in when we're, when we're done and we've moved on. There is obvious, there obviously could be a need for creating some strategic locations for public Wi-Fi deployment. Exactly where those are, I'm not even pretending to tell you right now. But the idea that there could be some planning and implementation costs, and then that could be deployed is real, and it could help the city in terms of with more connectivity, that means more businesses and people would like to come to the city because they can maintain their connection through their cellphone or wherever and be able to do things. The idea, the next idea is one which is viable in all the cities in the region, which is to establish some way, that there could be some way that Comcast and landlords could work to increase connectivity. We've heard many times in almost all the cities, and especially Springfield, that yes, there may be a map that shows the wires are there, but how well things are reconnected in the building sometimes can be a great mystery and also cause quite a significant challenge for the residents who live there in terms of their ability to connect up, especially as you talk about kids on devices and homework and other things. There might be a way to establish a fund to support the distribution of computer devices loaned, discounted, or free for those who do not have the wherewithal to be able to afford such things. And this would bring people into the world of being able to be online and help this and get help. And this would be one way to do that. And again, with the digital divide, the idea here is that this would be one way that the city could assist with crossing that divide. There would also be the idea that you could coordinate citywide in terms of existing programs and training that are in the city, groups that are already doing repairs, people that are people that are already doing trainings in digital devices, people that could help. And therefore, not only does this allow for training in digital skills, it also allows for the idea that people would be able to gain more confidence in their use of devices once they get the trainings that they need.
So Eric, before you keep moving, I just wanted to quickly pause there because I know a lot of these were recommendations that have been on previous examples. So I just wanted to take a moment to pause there. And I know this is, this meeting is intended to give feedback on what is on this final report. So I guess my first question to you, and you don't necessarily have to like have a full answer now on it. I don't want to, you know, hold the meeting from the rest of the document that you're going to highlight. But I just want to make sure that like, in terms of this final report and what we are supposed to be doing in terms of this final draft for the implementation, right? And for the dollars that we are going to go after from that hundred K, what are the, I guess, to you, what are the the recommendations here that kind of align? Do all of these align with that? Or do some of them, because it seems like some of them are more, might be just recommendations in general of like, you know, coordinating, right? Like, that's something we can continue to do.
Right.
City, right? But in terms of like the implementation stuff, careful. I just want to make sure that we're being, you know, specific on that when it comes to trying to finalize the report.
Yep.
Going after those implementation funds.
Let me see if I can find another way to answer that question.
And again, you don't have to answer it necessarily now, but it's just something that I'm thinking about as we're moving.
Okay. So we have a spreadsheet that has that in a contained form.
Okay, all right.
Do you want to see this? Did what I just clicked come up on your guys' screens?
No, I think you got us.
Okay, hang on. I gotta go back. Yeah, that's all right. Hi, Tracy, how are you?
Good, Eric, you?
I am great.
Awesomeness.
I gotta go back to shares.
For our folks that are here and counselors that are here as well, you know, just any, just quick questions on what he's brought up thus far?
Yeah, well, I'm trying to figure out the purpose of the meeting. It sounds like we've been working on the same document for a while.
So the purpose of the meeting is to have this final report done, turn it into MBI so that we can go after the implementation grant that we have in queue. What's MBI?
What's MBI?
Mass Broadband Institute.
Is that a grant application through them?
Yeah, this was a grant application through them, yes.
Okay, well, that's good. So you're just trying to finalize the information.
Yeah.
Grant.
Yep, and this positions, there's a couple of things here with regards to the grant and potential other grants that needs to be discussed as well. This way, you know what? I think this might be a time to jump into that real quick. And what we can do is provide back the spreadsheet as a follow-up to all this so that we can hear. But to go through what you first asked, creating a Digital Equity Working Group is obviously a decision. It is not a money-oriented question, so that's something that can be done. The consideration around some sort of navigator position is a budgetary discussion on the city, on the city's part in terms of how that could be accomplished and how they want to prioritize using some of the money.
Hold on, we're just gonna write there. Hold on one second right there because right now is budget season. So this is the perfect time to ask a department if they can afford a navigator position or talks of finance. We have the grants.
Yep.
Have Sequoia here. Sequoia, is that, was that something that was going to be written into the grant?
So there's a grant actually that I was thinking this position could be written into. It is called the the Launchpad Grant. So I may get ahead of myself here.
Yes, I was about to bring that up, so you just jumped a little bit ahead of me, which is great.
Well, I jumped ahead asking the question, I guess. We jumped into that funding, okay.
Okay.
But before we get going, I think the question was, the question was about like tasks. So the task is, we've been asked by MBI to finalize this report so that we can get this money so that we can get this hundred grand in terms of the report. But we have to have a plan, and so this is a plan. So this is what these guys are supposed to be finalizing, and we have it done by. And so we're trying to make sure we get ahead of that.
And then we have to do that.
Correct. Yes. So this is prerequisite to apply for the implementation funding.
Correct.
Our plan finalized, and then we can outline kind of what we want to implement, and that's what we spend the implementation.
Correct.
And so this is, so PVPC was, is.
A hundred thousand, Tracy.
Sorry.
I'm sorry?
One hundred thousand.
Okay, thank you.
So PVPC has to finalize this grant before June.
Right. So we would follow.
Hold on, Eric. So this meeting intended to have them discuss what they've put in this final report for us as a committee to give feedback, ask questions in regards to this report so that we can make sure we get to that final step.
Correct.
So this is the last meeting before the final step? Because if we've been going over and over this document for a while, I think it's tight, right? So this is the final meeting? And then the other question, not a question, but something I noticed is Roberta, I'm sorry. Her hand is up?
Yeah, I'm gonna grab on her next.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Ms. Roberta?
This section that has the major recommendations that we specifically include someone the public school on the ongoing committee.
I can't hear her.
We're having trouble hearing you, Ms. Roberta.
I think what I heard her saying was in the recommendation around the permanent working group, that we make sure that there's a representative of the public school system. Absolutely.
Since the children, since children make up a large portion of the resident population that need to be the beneficiaries of digital equity. And the second thing is, there's something that says to do something with Comcast. I would just suggest that rather than specifying Comcast or in addition to saying Comcast, we also say or other provider so that we don't have to, you know, if the agreement with Comcast changes two years from now, we don't have to reword that part.
That makes sense. I like that it's easy. Thank you.
In concluding my motion to approve, I agree with that changes.
Thank you, Charlie. I guess, to the comment that was also mentioned too. So Eric, to, to me, from what I understand, there are new things to this document that we've, that you, you and your team have added, right? Because I know the recommendations here we've seen before, but I guess I want to make sure that we make time to make sure that we go over to the stuff that's been added based off of suggestions from previous.
That is fine. All of the data has been updated as far as we can take it, and that is in the report. So I know Doug spent time working on that. I wanted to, since Sacon brought it up, I wanted to quickly jump on that idea of the Launchpad Program, which is that the Launchpad Program is a new program that will allow for communities to apply for additional monies in creative ways, and it could be significantly more than the hundred thousand. And I have reached out to MBI to find out more, and I know Sacon has as well. And I think there's, there's a real possibility here of applying for something, and we will stand behind you and help you do that. So that's one that has possibilities and options. There isn't a lot of detail because the next workshop, the first workshop on it was only announced a few days ago, and the first workshop on it is March 12th. And as soon as I can find out more and Sacon can find out more, we'll bring that back. But that's something happening in parallel to this, that we don't have much more need, except that they are looking for creative projects to be implemented. And I, the message that I delivered to MBI today, in fact, was I would hope that Springfield would be considered for one of these creative-type projects to get some funding coming to the city of Springfield. So that, that is, that is on the front burner right now.
That is, that's exciting news. Sequoia has brought it up to me, and you're bringing it up. So it's good for us to continue looking, but I want to make sure we don't get too sidetracked. I want to make sure we stick to this. Some folks have some time, so I want to make sure we get through this.
Okay.
Get the appropriate feedback. I see, hold on, before you go, I see Counselor Whitfield's hand went back up.
I think Sequoia, I, I think I was just trying to correct his name.
I'm sorry, Sequoia. I apologize.
Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor. I appreciate it.
That's all right. I owe you one. All right, so again, just going back to the idea of the navigator position, the hotspot program could cost some money. We can certainly detail that out. The idea of advocating for future funds, we're going to do that right up to the end while we're with you, and then the city's going to do more of that itself. That is not necessarily specific cost if you have people that are all looking. The idea of locations for public Wi-Fi deployment would be something the money could be used to do the planning. And then it could be decided how that could be implemented with the, not necessarily with these monies, but with other monies as they come in or through city budgets or whatever. And then noting what Roberta said, establishing a program, this is just tracking, working with Comcast or whomever and landlords. This is one that will allow for there to be more connectivity citywide, which also brings up the other question of, there was another grant that was asked at some point about Verizon getting some money. And Verizon got money for the GAP networks, to fill in the GAP networks, and they got money for Springfield and thirty-nine other communities. And what I have found out from Verizon is that this is money that was given to Verizon to reimburse them for work they had already done to extend the fiber lines. This wasn't, and this money can only go to people who build fiber lines or put them in place. So it's great that they're doing work in Springfield and in the other communities, but it's not something that we had access to as a community to be able to apply for.
Okay.
Last but not, not last but not least, but the last two that are here is the idea of creating some sort of fund to allow for computer devices to be loaned and discounted. Again, money could be put towards that, that could be added into a Launchpad Grant as something that you're doing under the Launchpad. That's certainly possible. And the last one of coordinating citywide programs, that's one that requires getting people to sit down together, talk to each other, and figure out how we're going to integrate what they've got with each other in a way that would be beneficial to everybody.
Thank you, Eric. I see two hands. I did recognize Counselor Govan earlier. I didn't see you jump on, but Counselor Govan?
Thank you. I'm sorry I was a little bit late. So, and I apologize, I don't know this information. I'm sure it's been said multiple times. I think this might be my second or third meeting on this committee. What is the total grant?
This, the total grant that would be going for is a hundred thousand.
A hundred thousand. So those positions, the hotspots and the navigator, would that be included in that amount?
We'd have to come up with costs for each specifically and say how much each breaks out, but they could be.
Okay, yeah, I'm just wondering because as Counselor Whitfield said, this is, we're getting into budget season, and I know that a goal of mine has been to make sure that, you know, we don't burden the taxpayers anymore. So if at all possible, I'd like to be, you know, make sure that we try to at least keep it within the parameters of that grant. And then we talked about loaning devices. I know that the library, and I see Jean on here.
Yep.
The library is doing that now, and I think they've been doing a great job of that.
Yes, they have.
So tapping into that would be great. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, and I see Mike. Just a quick addition, a number seven on that second line, it also talks about helping people in arrears. And just a quick call out on that. So Comcast has a subsidized program, Internet Essentials. The problem is if you're in arrears with Comcast, even if you're otherwise eligible, you can't get onto the program. So this could be, if there was a loan program, it could help people pay the arrears so that they can actually get onto the subsidized program. So just to explain what that little bit is about.
Okay.
Can I ask if that, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Sorry, thanks, Chair. That, that fee, is it like a one-time? You can't just keep coming back and getting that arrears payment, right? Because then it might be abused.
I, I think it'd be up to the city to figure out the parameters of, you know, is there a limit on their arrears? How often, you know, is it a one-time ask? I mean, I think there's, creating the fund would be sort of a conversation for the city and then what the possible uses are. So it doesn't have to include that. It could just be devices or hotspots. But it is one of the identified barriers that, you know, people can get cheaper internet plans on Internet Essentials, but you're sort of closed out if you owe them money.
Yeah, I get, I get it. Just, you know, don't want to burden the taxpayers also, as Counselor Govan says. So Sequoia, my next question is for you. How many grants are we looking at for digital equity? Because I think I sent you one. And I know Mr. Stevens is sending everything that he gets, so.
Yeah. Yeah, and Counselor Doggato and I have done our due diligence in terms of vetting those grants. Cases, unfortunately, we're not eligible to apply for those. So again, we're doing all we can do on our end to find funding for the future. Again, this one hundred thousand, as well as this other grant that is new as well, that I think is very advantageous to us.
It's the Launchpad one?
Yes, yeah, so there's not a lot of details that have come out yet, but it's a two-year grant of up to a million dollars. So there's a lot of initiatives that align with what we've outlined in our Digital Equity Plan that I think we should go for, essentially. I have to run it up the channels on the city side to make sure that we're good to go. But all in all, I think it's a very good opportunity for us here.
And I agree and support that.
Eric, how much can we get for the Launchpad Grant?
That is, well, they have nine point four million in the whole program, but they're talking about funding projects to significant levels, so not just a hundred, maybe two, three hundred, maybe more, depending on what it is.
I actually read that proposals can be up to a million dollars.
Wow.
Yeah, I read that, but I also heard through the grapevine that they're trying to distribute the money around the state. So, you know, I don't want to raise everybody's hope with a million when I, when I know how they, what that happens with. That's, that's just being careful with that.
Well, I'll just go for the million and let them cut us because.
That also goes towards us trying to find a lot, get this plan done, which I think we've talked about in the past, is like, we need to get this done. We can't, we don't have an actual plan. Mr. Howard's been patient over here, so I know. So I'm gonna let Mr. Howard take the floor if he has a question on the report.
Well, since I believe Counselor Govan might have to leave, so I'll give her the.
Okay.
Oh, no, no, I don't have to leave, but thank you. I do, I, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair. I guess Mike, I had a comment regarding the second possibility of a grant for the possibility of helping residents, you know, with their arrears. So maybe somehow writing that into that, that grant to make sure that we don't have, you know, anyone left out. But I think to Counselor Whitfield's, possibly finding resources where we can help people, you know, figure out a way to, you know, manage their internet somehow and use some of the community resources that we have. Because we have a lot of like computer centers and places where people go, like the library, where they can, you know, use the internet that way if they are in arrears, right? Or if they are in arrears multiple times, figuring that out. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. Stevens and Mr. Chair.
Howard?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Okay, the chair is going to kick me out of the room.
I understand. I understand.
Gonna stick to the.
I realize that the hundred thousand is what we're here to discuss.
Correct.
Right? But I'm also picking up that it's the only, that other allocations we don't qualify for. That may not be exactly correct. Because you're talking about what MBI has been allocated, and you're talking about what NTIA, National Telecommunications, or whatever it is. They have been putting out millions of dollars because their budget, their allocation was close to a hundred and sixty billion dollars. Some entities here in Springfield applied and got like, like forty, forty million plus dollars. And, you know, like, I'm just disappointed that all we focus on is a hundred thousand dollars when there are four other allocations that the governor put out there that totals over twenty-five million dollars just off the top of my head, and we haven't gone after that.
All right, I'm gonna, if, because you bring this up every single meeting, Mr. Howard, and every, and every, and every single meeting between Sequoia, between the folks who have talked to MBI specifically, have told us that what we qualify for, we are already in the running. The Launchpad is the newest thing. I will make sure that, you know, the team, Sequoia, looks into this, again, this NTIA. But I don't want to get derailed every single time because the focus of this meeting is to finish this report and finalize this plan.
I understand that, Mr.
So that's, that's kind of what I want to keep the focus on. So if we can move forward, because I know time is. So if we can move forward, because I know time is, time is crunched. Eric, if you can kind of continue moving forward on this, in the areas that you've added. Cause I want to make sure the full scope, so that any questions, concerns can be emailed, responded to you, so that we can kind of get this finalized.
All right, so in, in, after we've gone through the, the first list, the list of the eight priorities, then it turns into the report itself. We talk about vision and purpose, the importance of bridging the divide, which is stuff we all know well. Just as we go, Doug, I'm gonna call on you to, to let me know where specifically as we do this. This is the work that we've done as the PVPC. In our current conditions, we did update charts and, and sections to the most recent, so. Doug, you just tell me when to hit the pause button.
So, I sent you a message, actually, the, I think the first, you know, there's, there's tweaks throughout. And I think it's important to recognize that some of those are responding to feedback from, from your group, which has been very helpful. Others have been responsive to feedback from staff at MBI. The three new sections that, that I think are substantial and worth focusing on. Beginning on actually page thirty two, Eric. We walk through an overview of some of the digital equity assets currently existing in Springfield. Then starting on page thirty six. We do a overview walkthrough of the relationship between digital equity and health outcomes. As well as digital equity and education outcomes. And then starting on page forty, we, there's a fleshed out version of our recommendations that sort of. Goes into much more granular detail about some aspects of each of those. And may address some of the, the points that have been raised already. And then finally also in appendix three. We've done like a comparison table, sort of cross referencing. The major recommendations that we have for Springfield. With activities that have been recommended in a number of neighboring communities, not neighboring, a number of comparison communities. Most notably Worcester, Somerville, New Bedford, Greenfield, East Hampton, Brockton and Lynn. And so I will also copy this and. So that everybody can also see that for their current and future reference.
All right.
So I have a hand up from Counselor Whitfield, so I want to make sure I get her on this.
It's not on this, but it is on what Mr. Stevens said, and I just wanted to let you guys know that I put the link. For the national something, and it does look like we missed out on millions and millions of dollars. Cape Cod is getting on Boston, Cambridge. There's a bunch of money out here, so I'm thinking if this is a planning grant, because what, what's this grant that we're looking at right now, the name of it again?
It's a planning grant, but.
I want to know who the, who we're getting the grant from or who we're. MBI, and so MBI, if I look on this document too, have been getting. Broadband Institute, right? They've been getting money off of these larger grants, but if I could see cities like Boston, Cape Cod, Cambridge, getting. Millions of dollars. I think that Springfield would be in a, a good position to do it too, and we should do a little deeper dive on those.
That's something that we've asked both between the PVPC team, Eric and his team, and then Sequoia, it's the mission we're looking on. But in terms of this, again, this, what we have and what PVPC has been tasked to do by MBI is to help us to finalize. This report, so that we can go after many of this stuff, and so this report is going to have a number of recommendations. But we can't, so those recommendations are what, where we then go into those, into those grant opportunities.
Okay, I didn't know that PVPC was tasked to do this. Well, that's key information to say upfront. That's it.
All right, so. So in the next section here, we talk a little bit more in detail about what the recommendations are, which gets towards what we could do. In terms of what the timeline is, and if there are costs associated with it, which is one of the questions that you want to have answered. Again, here, same thing, so this could be looked at as a, as a guide for helping with that part. We looked at this and said, the hotspot program could be twelve thousand dollars per year for a hundred hotspots based on current costs. Then we talked a little bit about looking at other pla, other places for money. There is what seems to be lots of money, but it's all in the allocation, how it's allocated, who's allowed to access it and who's not allowed to access it.
But Boston can access and Springfield can't?
Well, there were, there were some things that were set up, I, I, I don't pretend to know offhand, so I'm not gonna try to answer.
I'll research it, thank.
And then again, for strategic locations, there was an idea of providing some money for funding. To actually come up with a plan of how, how to do that, so that's some of the money here of five to ten thousand. This one of working with the provider and the landlords is one that would require internal machinations of government and people cooperating with each other. Not necessarily money, but time. And then the, the last two are somewhat interconnected in terms of providing skills and providing training and, and. All those kinds of things, and it really just depends on whether you want to talk about device costs and how that could be covered. And or how we could help support some of the existing programs in Springfield to allow for people to access them in, in, in an easier fashion or. The more deliberate fashion, I guess would be another way to say it. There are other pieces that other places have looked at that Springfield could look at, some communities are trying to find a way to replace the Affordable Connectivity Program. It is a significant expense that is hard to replace at the local level. This one is one that the state or MBI likes to promote, which is the idea of a mesh area network in which a part of the city would have really good coverage. But it would require significant investments, there'd have to be a study that goes with it, but it could be a unique piece to Springfield's architecture. Downtown, if it was ever put in place. The idea of expanding for more competition, I think everybody in the city wants more competition, I don't think that's a, a secret, I think that there. It would be great if there was a real competitor to help push costs in a direction which would be beneficial to all. And then as Doug said, what we tried to do was a comparison chart showing what you, we were looking at with you and what other communities have looked at. And you can see some similarities, Worcester being very similar in a number of ways and these other communities being similar in other ways. But I know that from a demographic point of view, Worcester and Springfield are pretty similar in terms of size and population served. La, not last but not least, but we talk about the funding options, which we've just had that discussion, I'm not gonna even go back over that. We've, we've talked about that a couple of times, and then. In terms of the state funds by the Mass Broadband Institute, they have been working with us and everybody else. And this is the hundred thousand dollar number here, and what could be done with it, so that's, that's where we get to that. Cybersecurity is an issue that's coming up more and more in terms of for communities and businesses. It not necessarily something we can advocate cost through this, but it's something that is a big one that's out there. And then can there be ways to use block grant money as potential? We're now finding that in the CDBG criteria, they're identifying the need for access. To the internet as part of their criteria as well, so there's support there. And then the E-Rate program, which has been supported in schools and in other locations. There's been money, again, there was money that went to the workforce, training people of which we are not, that they got their monies already for that.
Eric, this is, so I am gonna.
And we're on our conclusion here, I'm sorry, go, I'm sorry.
I, I am gonna go back to that because I do see there on other funding, this is something we, we specifically. As a, as a group asked for you to, to highlight. I do not see anything in there on the NTIA that Mr. Howard has brought up. Brought up in the past, so that makes me a little, you know, a little frustrated, because I know we've asked you in the past to, you know. Take that into account, all the, you know, the comments, but that, if that's not in it, that's, that's a big.
All right, well, we will put that in.
And, and you know, to Mr. Howard's credit, he's brought that up several times over the last, you know.
Okay, that is understood. So we're down to the data sections here, so.
Michael, hold on, before you go, Mike's hand is up. I was just gonna add two things, but I can wait till Eric's done, if, if that's easier.
No, go ahead, Michael, go ahead.
So one is just in terms of another opportunity that is worth highlighting that Springfield is already doing, but MBI has a program called Residential retrofit. Which is related to this whole working with landlord lords to improve connectivity. And I know Springfield Housing Authority. Applied to be considered for that, it's, it's for both public housing and nonprofit housing developers, but. That's already in the works, so just, it's not in here, but it's worth noting that Springfield is in the queue for that, and that could be significant. And then the other thing, just briefly on the NTIA, from everything, and I, I have known, heard about recently is that. All the money that was queued up to go, there is. Several billion dollars that were queued up to go out into the competitive grants across the country, most of those have been pulled back. And so the money that was queued up under the Biden administration franchise is no longer available. I could put a, an article in the chat, but they're actually moving away from fiber and surprise, surprise, they're gonna put it towards. Funding Starling. So a lot of the, what we might have seen a month ago in NTIA is no longer available. And I know that's some of the frustration that we're all feeling as, you know, cities and towns and organizations in terms of federal funding. You know, but I still, you know, I, I think it's something that still should be in there with the asterisk. And then to your point on the Springfield Housing Authority piece, you know, I've had conversations with the Housing Authority on, on that as well. And I know that's something that they directly have to apply for, so it's not necessarily something that the city of Springfield. Right, self is applying for, but it's a benefit to this, to the city nonetheless. I, I thought, I think I saw Ms. Roberta's hand up first.
You didn't, but she hasn't.
But she hasn't spoken. We don't hear you, Ms. Roberta, if you're talking. Still nothing.
Okay, sorry about that, I don't know what the issue is, but it's probably on my end. I also had a concern about the federal funding, so I would like to make a suggestion. That someone, whomever is appropriate, reach out to the Commonwealth. Attorney General, if that's what they're called, if that's what the position is called, to see if. Possibly together with other communities in Springfield, Massachusetts. We can encourage them as part of.
You're, you're breaking up on us.
If we can reach out to the Commonwealth Attorney General. Ask that these programs, the federal programs that were intended to fund digital equity. Be included in the lawsuit that the Attorney General of various states. Fearheading in order to get some of these funds released again.
Not a bad idea.
I like that idea, thank you for that.
That's a good idea, I like that.
All right, Ms. Whitfield, Counselor Whitfield, actually, I've been messing up your title all, all day.
It's okay, just call me Tracy. Tracy is good. I just wanted to say great work on all of this data gathering and all of the sharing of this report. It is really written very well, very well thought out, each section, I can read and know what y'all are talking about. So I just wanted to say that, because I am gonna have to leave in about five minutes, so Pioneer Valley Project and the rest of the digital equity team. I just wanted to say thank you for putting in time doing this work, because it is a great report, and I can't wait to read it on my own, I know it's been sent, and I've neglected it, Eric. But I'm going to go ahead and read that, but good work.
Thank you, thank you, Counselor.
So the, the next pieces that we're just looking at are all the pieces with the, the sections with the data, which we can either really dig into. Or just know that it backs up what we're talking about.
I think for, for time purposes, I kind of, you know, people have the report, I guess. My biggest thing is, is getting feedback on the report for, from folks, and then having time to talk about. Next steps and, and what those next steps are, because that's really been my goal, is is trying to get us. And for me, that's the most important thing, and we, we've seen a lot of the, the recommendations, you've cut them down. We've seen these things over the last, you know, year. But I, my thing is, what's next? How do we get to that end zone?
Okay, so I think that the way to handle this is, we will add that section on NTIA. And under the recommendation section, we can make it a little, read a little bit more as a roadmap. For giving you the direction you need there.
So what, what, so what happens next, so you, you, you.
The next, the next is approval.
You finalize this report, and then we have to have another meeting?
I think the city has to vote to accept it at some level.
Okay, that's kind of what.
We can, we can attach to this whatever you need for that, that part, in terms of the request for the hundred thousand with the description attached to that as well.
Cause I don't, I, you know, I think what I'd like to see is this finalized, you give it to us finalized, then we can go to Sequoia and, and. And give it to the administration, so that we, there, I think the biggest piece also is, you know, we've heard feedback on. You know, what people should add or, or whatnot, but yeah, I think that's kind of what we should be looking forward to do.
And we can, we can turn that around in less than a week for you, that's not a problem.
All right, I have a number of hands up, I think I saw Counselor Govan first initially, so Counselor Govan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, so I guess my question is. It sounds like you guys have been working a lot on this, and I, I was looking at the report, it looks really good. And do we, in this committee, I, I don't know if I'm a part of this committee or not, but is there, should there be a motion to accept? For the grant to be submitted, so that it could go to where it has to go?
There could be a motion to accept with the, the noting that we're gonna add a section on NTIA and provide a little bit more detail on the recommendation side.
So what I will say is technically there, technically there is no other counselors on, on the committee. But I'm happy, like, if you guys are ready to bless this.
I think, I feel like I am ready, it sounds like, you know, again, you've been doing a lot of work on this, the, this looks like the team, their, their due diligence. And adding that comment regarding the NTIA, I think, would be good. So I said, let's move forward.
Perfect, all right, thank you, Counselor Govan. Counselor, actually, Counselor Whitfield, I know you have to leave.
Yeah, I was just trying to get to where Counselor Govan just took us, so I'm good.
And then we had a hand raised by Counselor Allen in, in, in the room here.
Yep, okay, yeah, I see. A bunch of dates on this two page memo, the one that Jose you sent out. To Sequoia, and I just was writing down these dates of activities. January twenty second was when the document came out, there's a date of March fourteenth, which is next week. There's a date of March twenty eighth, April twenty fifth, June thirtieth, and July thirty first. If we accept this report, do we start working, is there working groups to work on this stuff? If we accept this report, do we start working? Is there working groups to work on this stuff? Are those dates definitely that that represent tasks we definitely need to do, or they just?
Though I think the dates you have are an email that we got from MBI.
Yeah.
Kind of laying out, okay, like, here's the. That the the dates that we need to be aware of, right?
Right.
The June date is what we have to have submitted. Then there's like a whole proposal thing.
Yeah, by July, July, yes.
So those are all the kind of like, get in by, so that's what.
And we will stay with you through that part of the process.
So.
Could you just explain what that means? Are you PVPC?
Yes.
Yes.
I mean, and you are funded or? Project.
Well, we, yeah, we can help you get through the, get over those next hurdles.
Okay.
When you say we can, is that something? I I I love your willingness to do it. I just don't understand who's in charge of this, and you know, are you working on this?
Oh, no, I didn't know the way the whole process was designed, there needed to be follow up that it was in. Understood that whoever was gonna be working with the city would have to help you with that follow up.
PVPC is a consultant that's supposed to get this together, helping us to get forward, and then. Yeah, the city's supposed to kind of essentially through the next steps, because Sequoia's name is technically on the thing, I'm not. Sequoia, but it's it's the city that then has to take this and say, alright, we're gonna be able to do this, and I think from our end, as a city council, I think. And from the committee, we wanna make sure that from these recommendations that we're pushing, you know, what we'd like to.
Exactly.
Okay. Oh, Ms. Roberta?
Yeah, I put in the chat, who is the city? Cause I think perhaps there's some confusion among the city councilors. PVPC is not under contract with the city council.
No.
We are, and we are serving in an advisory capacity. They're not under contract with us either. As the working group, so I think we need to be very clear on who it is. That they are under contract with and who they are giving the report to as the actual. Um what do you call it? The party to whom they are under contract. So that there's no con- there's no confusion about who actually makes the final decision. On whether or not they like the report.
Correct, so as I mentioned earlier, PVPC has the contract with MBI to help us to finalize this report. But it's still on us as a committee and a city to, that's what today is about, is about as answering any questions. That we have on this report.
Yeah, but there's another party to the contract, and it is not us, and it's not the city council. So please, let's be very clear. The prior chair of the working group had to go to Mayor Sarno to get his approval and go ahead. And I don't know if his signature is on the contract or not, cuz I've never seen it. But it's it's a three-way agreement between MBI, PVPC, and let's also be clear. That MBI has named PVPC as the only consulting firm that we can engage with. In Western Massachusetts for these programs, so it's not like we have. With all due respect to Eric, it's not like we could decide tomorrow to go to somebody else. The third and the third leg, as far as I'm aware, is the mayor's office.
And so.
With us.
So when I say the city, that's what I'm meaning, Ms. Roberta, is that's why we have Sequoia in here, cuz Sequoia works for the city of Springfield. So when I mention the city, it has to get approval from the mayor and his administration.
Alright, I just wanted that to be clear to the counselors. I I very much appreciate their presence. But again, it's not a city council decision on whether or not they like the report. Although I very much appreciate their presence and anything that they can do to make digital equity available in the city of Springfield.
No, that's fair. I appreciate that.
That is understood, however, we do have to approve the funds if it is awarded to the city. And so we also have to do our due diligence and make sure we know where this information is coming from. While in the beginning, I did not know PVPC was involved, it came to fruition that they are and that they were working for this. Um MBI, so that did become aware to us, but nonetheless, it's still our fiduciary responsibility to do our due diligence. And make sure we're understanding everything that's written in the report, and because I did not read it, I'm asking questions, and when. It was always my understanding from working in the finance department for the city that Sequoia would have to bring this up to actually the. Um the um CFO, um and then they go to the mayor and get the approval and all that, so. All of that has been understood, but we as city councilors have to do our due diligence and ask questions and make sure we understand with all due respect. Thank you.
No, I was not contradicting that. It's just that, you know, we've been at this for a while. And unfortunately, there's been through the through time, a confusion about who has authority to agree. To whatever or to approve whatever. But I was not contradicting what you were saying, Councilmember Whitfield.
Thank you.
Understood, thank you. No, no hard feelings. I just wanna make sure that I'm not stepping on toes, but I do wanna understand what's going on, and I thank all of you. For all the time you've taken and all of your hard work, so with that, I'm gonna say adios.
See you, Counselor. Um I know we got four minutes to five thirty. I wanna keep on track. Mr. Howard does have his hands raised, so I wanna give him.
The the there's several, there about four different deadlines between now and July. To apply for additional funding. Next deadline is March tenth, which is Monday. And, you know, I'm surprised that I haven't seen anything that whereby this committee, this working group is going after some of those funds. That die on on the on March tenth, and then there about three or four others that come up. I haven't seen anything about that.
Dollars. Nope, the March tenth one, or we've already talked to MBI, and they've already told us not something that the city of Springfield can apply for.
Correct.
So that's what I want. I wanna make sure we we stick to what we have. We've already heard what we can get from the MBI. If you have any other ones outside of MBI. I'll share with you later. Continue to let. Alright, so again, so next steps is we're gonna, you guys are gonna update this, you're gonna send us the final draft.
Yep.
Copy, and then we're moving this over to the city side.
Correct, so is there a motion on that?
Well, we don't need to have a motion, but I mean, if folks wanna to vote on it, I mean, do folks on the committee feel fine with where it's at? After the additions are made?
I think Charlie made that motion about an hour ago.
Alright, so we're good. So any.
So the rest of us can just raise our hands very quickly and.
Alright, so let's just do the vote just first, so raise the hands of moving this forward. Alright, I see a bunch of hands, and I've seen some online hands.
Virtual hands.
Alright, so Eric, you're, you got a quick turnaround time.
We do, and we will meet it.
Um but I I'd like to see this like as soon as possible, cuz that's that's not. Exactly, so I I don't wanna wait like another week or two weeks.
No, 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 um.
So when when do you think you can get this to us by?
Friday.
Okay, good, perfect.
Yep.
Any other questions?
So when when will it be presented to the to the city council?
To the mayor?
But doesn't it have to get get to the city council?
Yeah, it goes to the mayor first, and then we approve any funds once we get grants. Then we approve grants that come in once we've already gotten.
Okay.
So when how, when will the mayor have it on his desk?
As soon as we.
Yeah, so as it comes in, I'll work it up.
Alright, Eric, it's on you.
Yep.
Perfect, alright, I appreciate everybody's involvement and we're.
Alright, good meeting, thank you all.
Thank you, guys.
Everyone, thank you.